Ready? All right, good morning. We'll call the meeting into order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the July fifteenth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any comment?
Yeah, I, there needs to be a couple of changes on there. I think that it's, gosh, where are they? I had it marked up here.
Okay. We have, we have all day.
Oh, yeah, we do, don't we? Okay, um, under approval, minutes number one, it says Councilwoman Plunkett. It needs to be Councilwoman.
Hey, hey.
Those are the amendments from the last.
Oh, okay.
I have to note the amendments from the last meeting.
Oh, okay. Well, then, then I retract.
Okay. Any further comment?
Thanks, Dan. No problem.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Legal updates.
Morning, Council. So there's several different things I'd like to address. First, um, one on the agenda is the notice of fiduciary capacity emails that are received by this council, like commissioners, and several of the state entities, uh, office holders across the state. A question was asked to me about what needs to be done with these documents that you receive. They need to be treated as public records, so they are part of the file or the account letting them forward. They are there, um, treated as any other public record. There's a question regarding, um, some of the language in there where it's requesting that this council take certain actions, um, regarding the power of the people. The, people can request this council to do whatever and take whatever action. The council does not have to do that, right? I can sit here and say, hey, I would like to use your vote on fixing this bridge. That doesn't mean that you take action fixing that bridge. The quotes of the Constitution are correct in saying that the power is with the people. Generally, what the courts have done and what you've seen throughout history is the power is with the people. It is through the voter, right? So every four years, there's an election to select the representatives, um, to make the decisions for the people. At that election, you, the citizenry selects its representatives, and those representatives start to act in what they believe to be the best interest of the constituents who put them in office, and that is where that people, the power generates from. So I hope that answers the questions that were raised. Happy to address any other questions if you have.
Councilman Williams did that answer all of the questions you had?
So when we did, um, um...
I was saying, Councilman Williams, did you have any?
I'm sure started laughing at him.
No, I didn't.
Got a little thing in my nose. Go ahead.
When we get notices in general and we're asked to respond, is there anything that we should respond to?
Because you can say that you've received certain things. It's like a public record request, right? In Indiana, you, I think this is a good example to use, in Indiana, you have, we have our access to public records, right? The ABRA request. When you receive an ABRA request, you must say that you've received it and that you're going to respond to it. Sometimes people put in information requests, where there's nothing in the state of Indiana that is a information request, that the access comes to the public records. So when somebody files a FOIA, unless it's put into an ABRA-type format where it's access to public records, there's nothing that you need to really do with a FOIA issue to an Indiana municipality. There isn't a provision for that, or there's not a statute that corresponds to that. When somebody files, like in this situation, where they're asking you to make, if this council chooses to make a determination as to making a statement as what or how you view that clause of the Constitution, you can, but there's nothing that mandates that you have to do that. Does that make sense?
I just, I, we've got, we've got so many of them. I just don't know what to do.
Yeah, I know, I, we've gotten a lot. I know that the State House has gotten a lot. I know the Governor's Office has gotten a lot. Lieutenant Governor's Office has gotten a lot. These documents are floating around out there, um, but in my opinion, there's not a statutory obligation for this council to take any action with it. You take it, you consider it, you keep it as public record, and if you want to, as a council, take action, you can. Nothing prohibits that, but there's nothing saying you need less.
John, Dan, Justin, are you guys, I don't know if you guys are getting to, are you guys?
Oh, yeah. Uh, yeah.
I think we've gotten three. What we, what we're getting are every time someone signs it, there's another email is what we're getting. That's why there's been so many. I think two were last year, and then I think there's just been one this year.
So I'll move on to the next item then, if there aren't any other questions. The next items is the inkeeper's tax. Now, this is the first reading of this. We've had discussions previously about it, uh, whether to do legislation and increasing it up to, uh, the eight percent. That is what you guys have discussed. This is the ordinance that implements that. We'll have a second reading and a public hearing before that, but this is just the first reading of that ordinance, the inkeeper's tax.
It's flowing from five to eight percent.
Any questions?
And this is actually unanimous on the first, well, the first reading?
No, because we've got to have a public hearing because of the tax, so.
Because of the tax.
Yeah.
I'm not laughing. Literally, as we speak, I think that was just one of the notices.
Oh, okay.
I'm not.
Couple of other things real quickly that I just want to clarify further, and I hope the council allows this is, you know, at the last meeting, there was some discussion, some confusion regarding, uh, who was able to come up and speak, uh, at different positions. And, you know, I had raised this with Council President Hostetter prior to the meeting about making sure that we have a clear record, just because of the new, it's not a new statute, but because the statute came into effect July first, where all meetings need to be, streamed, kept, that there would be more eyes on it, that we want to make sure that we have a clear record. And so I think I got my message crossed a little bit with, uh, Council President Hostetter. You guys are the council. It is your meaning that you need information to make the decisions for, uh, what's in front of you. So when an issue comes up, it is really trying to control the comments that are coming out of the audience. If it is a question regarding the jail, I fully expect that Sheriff Harris would be able to come up and speak to this council regarding his concerns or, um, thoughts regarding the jail, and that this council would then be able to ask the sheriff questions regarding the decisions and the issue in front of the council for consideration. That's how you're going to get your information to make your decision. What I wanted to try and keep from happening is, it's a jail issue, but then all of a sudden Debbie wants to bring in something else from the auditor. It, it's keeping it to the issue that is in front of you on the agenda, to the parties that are tied to, I'm sorry.
I mean, it makes sense.
The, um, so if it is a jail, you're tying it to the issue that's on the agenda. You're hearing from the people who have permanent information regarding that. You're able to ask questions that you want to from that person on that issue that is in front of the council to make your decision. So just want to clarify that, make sure that we're on board. I'll be a little bit more vocal. I told Council President that I would come up and say, ah, I think that's okay, that's not, so, um, go back to that.
Thank you.
Any other ques, any questions?
And we, we're having a discussion as council members. How does that play into effect? So we're having a discussion as council members. Let me, let's, I don't want to leave any ambiguity. The last council meeting, we were having a discussion about, I think, a salary ordinance or subject being paid. I brought up a specific question about it. I was told I couldn't ask that question until it was time for public comment.
I think the best way, and the way that it, the meeting should be, I, I put this on me and my lack of ability to properly explain, put that stinking creepers. But I, I think the process there is you guys, as a council, need to be able to ask your questions and get the information that you need to have in order to make your decision, right? If it is a question regarding, uh, a bridge funding issue, and Nick Parr is over talking to you right now, John, you should be able to ask, well, all of the questions that you have regarding that project, so that you have the information that you need to vote. Councilwoman Moore, same thing for you. Like, each of you should be able to get your questions answered by that, um, individual that comes into your thought process in making a decision.
I think we had at the last meeting, we were discussing, we actually took a vote on something, might have been in Debbie's office, but as the rules say, now she can't just come up and say something about it unless we would ask her to come up during, during the discussion for something about her office.
Correct.
So it has to be recognized by the chair. Is the way I would put it, is you don't want to just have a free-for-all of people coming up and speaking. They should be recognized by the chair, um, as somebody that has permanent information to that agenda.
If we're, if we're dealing with the clerk's office and the clerk's here, and we're getting ready, we're discussing and we're getting ready to vote on something that they have a problem with, they should be able to get up and speak or say something before we take that vote.
Yeah, and be right, and they can speak once they're recognized by the chair.
Yep.
So can they just raise their hand, and I can say, yes, please, clerk, come speak to us?
I want to go back to my question. We're discussing here, as a council, the councils prevent to ask questions related to that subject to get as much clarity as they want without having to wait until the public comment section.
So, so if, if you're going to have a vote.
Correct.
On an issue, then it's important that you get the information that you need to have prior to making that vote.
Okay. Without having to wait until the public comment section. I want to make, I want to make sure we have that point clear, because I want to go back to it. In the last council meeting, I was told that I could not ask a question about a vote that we were taking. I made it clear and was told, no, you have to wait until public comment to ask that question.
And again, I think that, I will put that on me. I did not make myself clear as to that, and I probably should have gotten that to discuss.
Thanks for the clarity.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Thank you for the clarification of that.
I think that's everything that I should do.
Thank you. County Attorney Resolution, authorizing petition to establish Regional Sewer District for Boone County.
Hi, good morning, Council. For those who walked, that's the county attorney. For those who watched the commissioners' meeting, this is a procedural step that must be taken in order to continue with the idea of having a regional sewer district. This is funded by your board. The contract was entered into by the commissioners. IDEM requires a petition from each governing body just to authorize the filing to take step one. So that's what this is. It's just a resolution. It mirrors almost identically to what the commissioners approved last week.
Did you have a question? Commissioner Paye, if you can come up, I just have a question on the sewer district. In this process, are you all doing any work with, did you talk to Lebanon about this and what their plans are? Because I know they're looking at, they have a sewer district, if I'm not mistaken, already. Are you guys working with the city of Lebanon to kind of either partner with them on this at all, just out of curiosity?
I had a conversation with the mayor.
Okay.
And, uh, there, there was, I think there was some kind of miscommunication. He wanted to talk to me about, uh, making city sewer and water available, but only if we annexed, and I don't think that's our position at this point.
Okay. So our plan is just to move forward, force them ahead with our own?
Yes.
Okay. Did this go before a board, before it came to you all?
Is what?
Did this go before another board, before it came to the commissioners?
I don't know.
No, no, the Regional Sewer District Board has not been created yet because the, this is step one in the process, just to get it formed. Once this is formed, there will be a sewer district board that oversees all of these operations.
Do we just need a motion approving this? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Auditor Crum, resolution to close certain funds.
We had, um, the county attorney draw up this resolution, um, closing out Fund fifty-two oh six, which is our old psycho insurance fund. It's not been used since twenty seventeen. It has a balance of thirty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-four cents in it, which will be moved to the commissioner's insurance line, ending in five-one-two-two.
What was that old fund again, I'm sorry?
Five-two-oh-six.
Is that the, is it moving to the non-reverting line?
No.
No, okay.
Nope. Because we're not using it yet.
Okay.
How much did you say was in there, Debbie?
Thirty-three, four eighty-three, point three-four.
Are there any further questions for Auditor Crum? Any discussion from the council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Um, next is the Sheriff's Commissary Report for January through June of twenty twenty-five. The statute changed effective July first of this year, and the sheriff is now required to produce or provide us with his commissary report quarterly, with us receiving it the month following the end of the quarter. And we are to establish a process for reviewing that, so we place that on the agenda, because this is the first one that would be due since the new law went into effect. My understanding is, is we just have to acknowledge that we've received this and reviewed it.
So, yeah, whenever you look at statutes, you look at the language that they include in there. In this, it does not include language that has to be approved or anything, such as that the sheriff has to provide it to you, that you have reviewed. And so there's no technical, formal action that you will need. You can set up your procedure, say, okay, this is how we will accept it. This is how we'll acknowledge that we've reviewed it, uh, but there isn't a formal, we accept or approve or whatever.
So do we just need to say we've received it and reviewed it? No motion?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Well, we have received and reviewed the January first, twenty twenty-five through June thirty, twenty twenty-five commissary report from the sheriff's office. Additional requests, HR, NeoGov.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, um, this is just a request for, um, thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and ninety cents for, uh, the rest of the funding for a new NeoGov contract up is through July of twenty-sixth. Enough of the credit expense, I'm sorry.
Did we reduce anything? Did we take anything out?
Uh, we took out, um, LARN. We dropped LARN to move OSHA back into the IPEP system, because it's free, so.
How much is the total contract?
Sixty-six, seven, ten, ninety-nine.
Is that per year?
Uh, that's for this upcoming year. So when you sign the three-year contract, it prorates each year, and then the third year is the full amount, so it'll slightly increase each, each for a new year.
What's the total for every year?
Next year, seventy, next year, seventy-four thousand, a year, four forty, two, ten, eight, eighty-five, nineteen.
Two, ten, what?
Uh, two hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and nineteen cents.
Per year?
For the three years.
Seventy, ten, a year. Yep. So roughly seventy thousand a year. And then you consolidate some other tools?
Yeah, so we're dropping, um, which, so the separate, we have a separate contract for benefits and timekeeping, uh, which we have some in for already, um, but we had dropped, uh, we're dropping steel and time plus to move all the benefits in NeoGov.
And have some savings with those by doing this.
Yeah.
Any further questions for HR?
Just want to say thanks for all your effort to get us to this point and getting everybody together to talk through it, make sure that we got buy-in, so that we're not buying something that people aren't going to use, so thank you.
Is there any discussion amongst the council? Since this is an additional request, we do have to open this for public hearing, so this will now be open for public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this, please, um, approach the front table, state your name, um, your business, and, and the county address, and you'll have two minutes to speak, and I will notify you when you have thirty seconds remaining.
I'm not sure if I'm, sorry. My name is Jody Stewart. I am a resident of, uh, our, resident of the city of Lebanon, and I have been a rural Boone County member since two thousand and three. I would like to address the council today on a few matters. And the first matter.
Is, are you here, sorry, are you here to address the NeoGov issue?
No, I would like to address the council on some other issues.
Can you?
So are you going to open public comment at the end of the meeting?
Yes, so there will be public comment at the end. Sorry, this is just a public hearing on the additional request.
I will be back after.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay, is there any other, um, comment, um, for the public hearing portion? Having, okay, there's.
I was going to say, Joel, can you just clarify that for those that are online, please?
Yeah, so you, you'll want to clear, make sure that there aren't any members online that wish to testify in the public hearing. And then I, what I would do is just see.
Is there anyone online who would like to be heard in the public hearing for the NeoGov contract? It's like there's one person trying to connect to audio. There's, do you see the one that says connecting to audio?
Yeah, they just.
Okay. Okay, all right. That will close the public hearing portion of, um, the NeoGov funding. Any further discussion from the council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Debbie, or Auditor Crum, I believe you are presenting the Superior two interpreter line additional request.
The first additional is, um, from Superior Court two, asking for an additional twenty-five hundred into their interpreter line. Only thing I can say is that they, that line has increased usage since last year.
Any questions for Auditor Crum? Any council discussion? Okay, at this time, we'll open this additional request up for a public hearing. Same rules apply. Please approach the podium or unmute yourself, and you'll be given two minutes to speak with a thirty-second warning. Okay, we'll close public hearing at this time. Any further council discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, the next additional question is the Health Department.
This is actually not a true additional. They have the money in their HFI fund, which is eleven sixty-one. I have just asked that they move, they're currently paying their attorney out of unappropriated, which is hard to track in our office. So I'm just asking that they put thirty-three thousand into their attorney line, which is eleven sixty-one, ends in oh-oh-oh-one. And they have the money in their cash balance.
They what?
They have the money in their cash balance and are just moving it into the line.
Do we have to do a public hearing?
I believe so.
This is an application.
Any, I just think any questions for Auditor Crum?
Thirty-three thousand, we're halfway through the year. What's the breakdown of this?
Well, this was actually done a couple of months ago, but it was tabled due to some issues between council and Health Department, so, or, I mean, Commissioners and Health Department, so we're just, I didn't have a change in the balance, we just moved it. It just goes back into their cash balance at the end of the year if they don't do so.
So is this a, is this going to be an annual contract with?
I don't know. Nobody's here from the Health Department.
That's just for this year.
As far as I know.
Yeah.
And this is the.
But I don't, I can't comment on that, because I'm not a professional.
I might, I guess, I could.
You could, as a liaison.
I was in the liaison meeting yesterday. Was that when we were there?
Yeah.
And we did talk about this for going forward here, and, um, I believe it's their plan to use in-house counsel beginning one-one-twenty-six, so I don't think we're going to see this recurring expense.
Thank you so much. Is anyone online from the Health Department?
Dan Lamar.
At that time, it could not have been better. Could being? I, I guess where I'm, I guess where I'm confused at, I see a thirty-two thousand-dollar budget item. I know the commissioners talked about bringing in-house counsel, and we have an outside council fee of thirty-two thousand dollars, and I know there was a huge scuttlebutt at the beginning of the year about bringing in-house counsel in, so I'm just trying to correlate the two of, how do we get to this point of outside counsel, thirty-two thousand dollars, and bringing in-house counsel in and saving money? So that's why I'm just confused that. Maybe somebody could help explain that to me. No, no one from the Health Department is here. I see one commissioner here, two commissioners there. Donnie, Mr. Paye, anybody?
Auditor Crum, is this the contract that the commissioners signed last?
This is the current contract that the commissioners approved in their last meeting.
Okay.
That goes through twelve, thirty-one, twenty-five.
It's not really an additional, is it? I mean, there.
It is an additional because it's in their cash balance, so from my perspective, I have to treat it as an additional.
Okay.
Because we're taking that money and moving it up into the line.
Okay.
So on their terms, it's an additional.
Right. But it's their money. Yeah, they've got the money, though.
But they have the money, so it's not a true additional.
No.
I'm just asking. I get it's their money. I'm just.
No, I mean, I, I wish I could answer your question.
I, I get it.
I don't feel like I should speak on behalf of the Health Department.
I, I get it. I'm, I'm just asking. I think I've asked about everybody.
I get it, no, I get it.
I think, I think it would boil down to, excuse me, those, those dollars mentioned, the thirty-three thousand dollars between the commissioners and the Health Department, there was, and I'll use your word, a scuttlebutt, uh, with respect to those dollars and how they were to be spent. And then there was, in a public meeting, there was some threats made with respect to, well, if you do, we're going to sue you. Well, if you do, we're going to sue you. And then we decided to have a meeting, what, two or three weeks ago? And then we decided to have a meeting, what, two or three weeks ago, and Sherry, in her genius, said, hey, let's just agree to disagree. We've got, that, those monies came from the state. Why don't you guys use those to the end of the year, and then over the next four or five months, we'll have discussions? And then in the end, we all agreed, as we walked out of that room, uh, ten days ago, we all agreed that, let's just let the Health Department keep their current attorney that they have, and then on January one, the Health Department Board had decided that we're gonna go ahead and use the in-house attorney, which would expect to have that code. And Sherry is the one who brought the piece into the room.
Kevin.
You called everybody, well, you did.
Wow, and then the commissioners voted two to one to go ahead and approve, um, that next Monday. So, um, you know, kudos to the commissioners to, to getting to a, a solution, um, so that we can move forward.
It worked out well, yeah, it worked out well.
Well? That's interesting. I, I don't know if everybody heard what I heard, so, someone was threatening the lawsuit?
That was in the letter.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It was in the letter, it was just saying, there's a chance they could sue each other.
I don't need it, I don't need the letter in the court much. So, I guess I'm, I guess I'm, again, I guess what is a little concerning is, I guess you wouldn't expect that, uh-
I love your comments, I mean, let's hitch up speed.
Yeah. So, I guess according to Mr. Van Horn, a lawsuit threatened, I don't, I don't know about you, getting out that I had to-
That was a public meeting.
A public meeting.
That was a public meeting.
Hey, let's agree to just settle it and pay the, the legal fees for the outside counsel, and then figure it out later.
Well, that's, there were no, that's not in the minute, but that was in a public meeting, and that's how Kevin described it. And so, there was no vote taken in that meeting, it was just a discussion with the Health Department Board, the commissioners, and anybody else who showed up for the public meeting. And I know you weren't there, but that's, that's some, that's a synopsis.
I guess what I'm challenged with is that, again, I know at the beginning of the year, there was a, I guess you all, I hope you all interpreted, I've talked about the scuttlebutt, that was not in the same reference what I was talking about. We brought inside coun, the commissioners brought inside counsel in, and said the reason behind that was to lower costs on the county for, uh, legal fees, and they used, if I'm not mistaken, we can go back and look at the minute, the Health Department, they used some of the other boards, and said, hey, we were gonna use, who's now Beth Copeland, to, you know, be able to lower these costs. Ms. Copeland, I put you on the spot, are you able to handle Health Department needs? And I don't know, how many, how many hours are we talking about? I guess I'm now curious, it, it, what's thirty-three thousand dollars?
Um, Beth Copeland, I'm not returning, uh, yeah, so the comment was made at, at some meeting that I've attended at some point, that they estimate roughly two hours of work per week, um, to be performed. Uh, and there is, my understanding that, well, let me back up, let me provide some-
Our phrase of arrival, thank you.
We'll let Ms. Copeland finish, responding first.
So this is, this would be my, uh, assumption for the request at this point. Obviously, the auditor needs to have her documentation correct, so, um, but the commissioners approved a contract that terminates on twelve-thirty-one, and for three thousand dollars a month for five months, so that's our fifteen thousand dollars. I can't assume what the additional money is for unless they authorize litigation. If they authorize litigation, that goes outside of what his retainer is, so that would be my assumption of why they're asking for more than fifteen, but less than whatever.
I have a quick question.
I'm sorry.
My understanding, the process is, um, you have to have council funding first, then you present a contract to the commissioners, and then it moves forward. There was already funding, correct? Commissioners have approved the contract, we're just being, to make it the accounting clearer, we're just being asked to move the money?
Not to make it clearer, it's to follow it.
I'm sorry, can I-
That's what has to happen in my-
Okay, okay.
Can we just have a quick point of order? Jewel, do we have a rule in place on the council about debates that can happen with the council president, and debates that happen on behavior that-
So, the council generally follows Robert's rules of work. And so, when you have Robert's rules of work, the presiding officer of the, uh, meeting should not participate in the debate, but is in charge of facilitating it, recognizing who has the chair. If the, um, presiding officer wishes to participate in the debate on assistive guidance, we can pass the gavel, and then, so, Council President Haas Center would pass it to Vice President Ritchie. Vice President Ritchie then would not be able to participate in the debate, but Council President Haas-
Is there a difference between debate and asking a question to clarify?
Is there a difference? Yes, I think the safest way to go about it, though, because the line is pretty, is not a bright line. It's not a bright line, because some questions could be asked to get information to essentially debate the issue.
Okay.
And so, that, that's the only reason why I would say, I think the safest way to do it is to not, or to pass the gavel.
Just to clarify, my understanding is we've always done this wrong, as far as the statute on funding contracts and how that goes, so I really was just trying to clarify that and not debate the issue, so.
Okay, okay. So back to it, we're at three thousand dollars a month?
Effective August first.
Effective August first. We have a thirty-three thousand dollar-
August through- August through December?
August, September, so when it's there with December.
The contract I have is for January, and I have, the contract the commissioners signed is August, is effective August first through December. This additional, this additional was done previous to that. You have to understand, I've had this in my office for a couple of months, because commissioners and Health Board could not agree. So this is from the previous contract, and that's the only contract I have in my office, so that's all I'm going off of.
So that, so there's, there's a challenge, so-
So the Health Board had from an agreement in March, without the commissioners knowing it, a debate arose as to the legal validity of that. Claims were made in April and May. Those were challenged, payments were still made. Legal assistance for the Health Board ceased, apart from me, June and July. We resolved the debate, they entered into a new contract, which was hyperlinked onto the commissioner's website. If a, if a fully executed draft has not been provided yet, I certainly can get that, uh, but it's effective August one for the next five months. So what was done in March no longer exists.
So that, I guess that's where I'm, I guess that's where I'm challenged at now. The contract is for August to December, five months. The additional, and if the contract is for thirty-five hundred, oh, for three thousand dollars a month.
But that's just the flat retainer, so if he bills anything outside of the retainer for litigation, that would be outside of the three thousand dollars.
He can come back and ask, he can come back and ask for an additional for that.
The Health Department very well could do that.
Yeah, I, I guess-
But I think they're probably just attempting to clean this up, so we can get through for the rest of the year.
Abby, are you able to-
Yes.
Come up to the front desk and provide any clarification?
I'm Abby Messenger, with the Brooklyn Health Department, I'm the environmental director. Um, and so, this money was already allocated, it was state funding we've had from the beginning of the year. Um, it was already allocated to where it needs to be, now it just needs to be put in a different fund line, is what I'm understanding.
It was being paid out of an appropriated, which means there's no way for us to track it. So that's why we want it in a specific line.
So that's why they want it in a specific line, from now, my understanding. Um, but this money was already allocated, the commissioners have approved, um, for the rest of the year. We do have some that might be going to litigation, so that's why there is some extra funding in there that we have had. Um, but again, we were using this money that was already allocated. So it sounds like it just needs to be put in a different line.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Is our county attorney able to do the litigation?
So we'll be doing, we'll be moving to the county attorney at the beginning of the year, um, next year, and that is something that was above me, um, so it's not much that I can answer to for that specifically, why we haven't used them this year, but I know that it was approved by the commissioners, so at this point, you know, I don't know, um, I, I guess I'm not hundred percent sure what the confusion is now, um-
For me?
Yeah.
My confusion is, my, my confusion is this, how much did you pay last year in outside legal counsel?
Outside what?
How much did you all pay outside legal counsel last year?
Um, I would have to look back, I'm not hundred percent sure.
Yeah, you can.
I have to, I can look back.
I would love to know that. My, my, my-
We can give that to you, for sure.
I would love to know that. How much you paid last year?
Okay.
My, 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 despite you said this to me, it was thirty-five hundred dollars for the entire year, so, I'm trying to figure out.
Well, and part of that also, I know that the commissioners helped fund, um, our, uh, attorney fees as well, because they were using, we used them with the general fund, so we were just, it was an additional on top of that, is what we were helping.
Okay, so, thank you.
So we can give you-
I've got one other question, just to clarify.
Yes.
So the thirty-six thousand that is gonna be allocated for this year, meaning twenty-twenty-five, that's all state grant money, that's not county funds, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
So it was state funding that we already had, approved through the state, um, budget that we have to do as well. Um, and then now we also have it, um, for our government.
Thank you.
And I, thank you. I do look at state funding as tax-free dollars. So when I look at funding, when I pay my taxes, whether it goes to the state or the Fed, and it comes back, it's still tax-free dollars. So I wanna be a good producer of everybody's money, no matter what.
Just clarifying that one.
No, I, I get it, thank you, but it's still tax-free dollars. What I'm looking at still is thirty-three thousand dollars is what the additional request is. You do have upcoming pending litigation?
Yes.
That you're anticipating. So again, trying to figure out how to save money, if we have the county attorney here.
And like I said, we will be using Beth at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
Yes, January one.
Look, look-
But it was, it was approved before, so.
Love that, I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way to start using her now to lower the thirty-three thousand, because she's the city in the seat.
No.
If, you can't use her.
I, from my understanding, no, um, because the commissioners approved the contract for the end of the year with Bob Carter. So we'll be using Bob Carter to the end of the year, and then we will be doing, um, going back.
Are you finding numbers that isn't listening? Mr. Pell, I knew you came up, what you got to add, what you got to comment on anything?
I won't be able to hear you.
Oh, okay.
Back there, I can hear you.
Okay, you came up.
Are there any further questions?
I don't have a question, I'm just putting the bow on my comments. I see, I see a contract for thirty-three thousand dollars for five months.
You don't see a contract for thirty, shit, you saw, there's a contract for-
I'm sorry.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
Let me clarify, you're one hundred percent right.
It's padded a bit.
I see a-
What's, that's what I was looking for. Thirty-five hundred last year.
I'm sorry, what was it?
Thirty-five hundred retainer fee for last year.
There was a retainer fee, but you didn't know how much was spent.
That was it.
You spent all of it?
They pay, they pay it all at the end of the year.
So they spent, so here we go. Last year, we spent thirty-five hundred dollars in all of twenty-twenty-four. This year-
There's no litigation last year either.
Yep, but last year, even better. So last year, there was no litigation, and we spent thirty-five hundred dollars. This year, we're spending three thousand dollars a month. How did we get to that? I have no idea. And we're using the, and we're using the same attorney. So now, what we spent in one year, we're spending three thousand dollars a month for the same attorney. I don't know how you got into this contract, that is very concerning. Every resident should be concerned, and it's just concerning, right? And you're spending three thousand dollars a month for five months. Have you spent any money prior to this, before the August?
Yes.
How much have you spent per month?
For, it was, it was three thousand dollars.
It was not three thousand a month.
For April and May, and then-
For April and May?
And then it was cut off.
And then it was cut off?
The contract was ended per commissioners.
So you spent another six thousand dollars?
No, three thousand.
I'm saying, for April and May, so six thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, can you come to the table and introduce yourself? Thank you.
I'm Becky Ann, I do all the financials for the Health Board, so, um, Becky Foster.
Hi, Becky, so, so we spent six thousand dollars, plus we're gonna spend another fifteen thousand dollars at a minimum.
But this year, we've spent three thousand dollars on attorney.
So we spent three thousand dollars on the attorney, we're gonna spend at least a minimum of another fifteen thousand dollars. Am I correct, Ms. Copeland?
Yes.
So we're gonna spend twenty-one thousand dollars at a minimum, when last year, we spent three thousand dollars. So that's a minimum, and then we're gonna spend additional, whatever else on litigation. And according to what Mr. Van Horn said, it was because we were gonna get sued, it's-
That's not the litigation I'm talking about, no.
I'm not saying, I, I don't know, I'm just letting you finish. According to what Mr. Van Horn said, hey, we're gonna get sued by the Health Board, so in order to let bygones be bygones, let's not do that, let's just be friends and sign this contract. Okay, neither here nor there. Again, I don't think it's great use of tax-free dollars to be doing this, I'm just gonna make that clear. And again, it could be state funds or whatever. I also think it's not a good use, because we have an in-house counsel, who I think is strictly, when I say this, because you're here. But I think Ms. Copeland is exceptional in her work and what she can do, and also, we could save you more money by using her, because you also, there's a transition period, correct? To move over to her starting in January. What better time than to start using her now for any upcoming litigation that you're gonna have? Because if you're gonna have this hard cutoff, you guys are gonna start using her in January, is that correct?
Yes.
I'm asking, I, all right, I just wanna make sure, it's on the record, we're gonna start using her in January. If you have ongoing litigation, how are you gonna just cut off your outside legal counsel? If you have ongoing litigation? Am I, Ms. Ms. Copeland, that's a hard thing to do, if I'm not mistaken, I'm not an attorney, but-
I'm trapped with you, I understand, you're, you're questioning if they file a lawsuit in October, November. Suddenly, am I gonna take that lawsuit in January? I understand what you're saying.
It's, having-
It's, uh, not ideal, but not impossible.
Not impossible, but again, the case could be made, hey, this attorney is here, there's litigation, there's a, there's a cost probably associated, or I'm sorry, there's a justification to say, we should keep this outside legal counsel for this. So there's a cost for their, I guess hourly rate for ongoing litigation. So you have that. I would strongly encourage the Health Board, the commissioners, to really reconsider using Ms. Copeland, our in-house counsel, for the upcoming litigation that you have, or else-
Can we speak?
Soon as I'm done, you can.
All right.
While I'm speaking now, I wanna make my point clear. Thank you, Becky. So, I would encourage you to do that, because again, thirty-three thousand dollars, when you spent three thousand dollars, thirty-five hundred dollars last year, I don't think it's a good use. Now you may speak.
Thanks. I'm not sure why you weren't at the meeting with the Health Board, between the Health Board and the commissioners, but they had one, a special meeting that was held and open to the public, and there were several of the council members there. They had hashed this all out. So it's already been discussed? Yeah, so it's all been discussed and passed. Again, the thirty-six thousand dollars were, was already allocated, we have to go through the state. As such, was a lot of other money in that fund, which does not revert back to the county, okay? So it's not like it reverts back in, and we can use it for something else. We'd have to go back through the state to use it for something else. Lisa has checked with the state, and they said it's perfectly fine to leave it in the attorney line. We understand about using Beth, and therefore, there was a, a resolution that was settled upon, that we would go with Beth at the first of the year and finish out with Bob this year. They discussed why Bob's fees were more expensive, um, this year than as opposed to years prior. He was our, has been our attorney for many years, and so, his fees increased- He was our, has been our attorney for many years, and so his fees increased because the county, he was no longer the county attorney. So whereupon, they had taken some of that financial pressure off from the individual office itself. So that's why we went from thirty-five hundred dollars per year to thirty-six, I think, thousand for this year. So, as Beth has said, this is where we're at. All of that was settled in that other meeting, the special meeting, and the minutes have been approved in the Commissioners' minutes. Already, we're waiting to our next Health Board meeting for the minutes from that special meeting to be approved. The only reason we're here is to get that money moved from an unappropriated line. It's a paper trail, only Debbie needs, I guess, a blessing, so to speak, to move that money into a line to finish paying Bob throughout the year. We're sorry that maybe we have litigation going on, maybe not, we don't know. It's, you know, part of the Environmental's job to enforce, right? Procedures and, and laws and ordinances and stuff, right? So that's just a part of it, and we hope that Beth doesn't have to come in the, in the middle of that. But if she does, she's unsure capable and ready for that, as we all know. So, I, I'm, I'm just not real sure why all the questioning. Erin from New Analyst, you know, just, I think, go on from what Debbie's asking, just to put it in a line, as opposed to unappropriated line.
Are there any further questions for our presenters?
I, I do, I, I want to clarify for you. I'm gonna ask questions, because that's my job as a council member, so that's why I'm gonna ask questions. I didn't know about this special meeting that you're talking about. I didn't know that the council had something hashed out, so council members, y'all, y'all have to figure, I'm not gonna ask for your apologies. I didn't know that there was a resolution, so all, all this is new to me. So, for you all that had some meeting that Becky's talking about, I, thi- this is, when I tell you this is all new to me, this is all new to me, so whatever Becky's talking about, somebody's got to bring me up to speed.
I think there was an email sent out.
There could've been, I could've missed it, y'all, again, and what I, I've been dealing with a lot of personal issues, some of you know about it, I've been dealing with a father in the hospital, I've been there every day. So, again, if I missed the email, my apologies, I try to keep up with council stuff. So I'm happy to go and someone send me all the emails and all the meeting notes. But I didn't know about some special meeting, whatever happened, and whatever resolution. So, I'm gonna ask questions until I get clarity, so my constituents know, and I'm gonna keep asking them. Go ahead.
There was a joint meeting between the Commissioners and the Health Board. Council was not involved, was it? I invited the two Health Board liaisons to attend the meeting, because it made sense. I, I, I'm strongly of the belief that any meetings that need to be held between the Commissioners and whatever board that the liaisons for, on the council, should start attending those, so we're all on the same page, and we all start operating together to move forward. Resolution, there was not a formal resolution in the, in the understanding that you and I have. As you voted on today on a resolution, I mean, that was just a misspeaking of words. I hear what you're saying about your concerns with respect to litigation. I can pass that along to the Health Board. The Health Board would be the body that would decide if they have litigation at some point in the next five months, whether they would like to use him, or whether they would not. These two will not make that decision, it would be the Health Board. And I have already had a meeting just in the last five days with the local health officer and their outside counsel, and I have started to schedule meetings with the Health Board members to get to know them, for them to get to know me and my credentials. So I will pass along your message and your concerns, so that they can consider it.
Well, that meeting was, that meeting was notified publicly. I mean, it, it was, it was sent out in an email, that there was gonna be, pardon me?
It was sent to the media. Yeah, it was part, well, it was, the meeting, what is the distribution list that we had? And it was, it was sent out as part of that, because it was a joint meeting where there was a majority of.
Cause the, the daggies were there, you, you're aware of it, yeah, so.
Yes, and it was.
Go ahead.
We're blowing, we're, we're just, we're, we're, it's, we're making a mountain out of a hole, Bill. This meeting was, this meeting was not like, it was not this, it was not a formal meeting, it was not that. It was just to be a discussion between grownups, to have conversations about where we're all standing on certain positions, so we can all look forward.
And there were just, and there were clearly discussions before that meeting about what was to happen. Thank you, Kevin, for your insight. There were discussions before that meeting about what people wanted to happen, and Kevin was very generous and kind enough to tell us, you know, what those discussions were about, and the conclusion that came from that meeting. So, we know that. The, I don't, it, it's, it's this notion of like, oh, well, there was a public notice about the meeting, like, okay, there was a public notice about the meeting, but there were meetings before the meetings. So I don't want people to act like there, there weren't. Like, clearly, there was a discussion and a decision made about what was to happen before that meeting. And, and remember, we're all public servants, everyone has one of these in their lifetime. I know people aren't sending stuff through snail mail, and if you are, you need to keep it, because it's still public record. And if you need a reminder of that, we can have Jewel come back up and remind us of what those are. Thank you, I want everybody to remember that.
Do that.
Thank you.
Sorry, girls. Yeah, sorry.
Alright, we have a question.
Is there any further council discussions? Right, at this time, we'll open up for public hearing on this additional request. Would anyone like to be heard, either online or in the room?
Okay, I just wanna make sure I'm doing this right.
It's, it's, sorry, it's public hearing on the Health Department issue.
Okay. Again, I am Jody Stewart, resident of, I'm a lifelong resident. I do have an issue with these funds that are to be public funds, and now you guys are wanting to allocate them to a totally different fund, and pay, and use them to pay an attorney. I have a problem with that. The state issued that grant money, and that grant money was to be used for public use, not used to pay an attorney. I don't feel like the Boone County Health Department has justified to the Commissioners why there needs to be an additional expense paid out for an attorney, when it is known in the past that that attorney only paid, was receiving thirty-five hundred dollars for one year of service. I do not see that these funds are justified. I do not see that the Board of Health is justified in asking to retain a full-time attorney on something that in the past, we've had no problem using the Commissioner hired attorney and him making thirty-five hundred dollars for a year. I don't feel that those, those fees have been justified. And I don't see that the Board of Health.
Thirty seconds.
There, I, I feel like the Board of Health needs to look and see, what else could those funds be used for, for public use, because that's what they were allocated for. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other public comment, or further, sorry, not public comment, comment for the public hearing?
I do have, I, I guess I have a question.
Just a minute.
Oh, sorry.
Is there an online? Commissioner?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So, uh, this is Tim Byer. I wanted to comment on a couple things that were discussed during the debate. Uh, number one, I'm not aware of any threats of litigation. There was questions about the statute concerning coming to the Commissioners for approval contract, and a desire by at least one Health Board member to get a legal opinion on that. But that was the extent of, of that issue, to my knowledge. The, regarding the meeting, that was out a couple weeks ago, that several people referred to. There were no agreements that came out of that meeting. In fact, if there were any agreements, it would've been a violation of the open door law, because there were three Commissioners there, so we couldn't make any agreements. So, I don't know what anybody thought came out of that meeting, but I was very clear that unless there was justification for those funds being spent, that I was not even in favor of it coming back before the Commissioners. Uh, I've also learned just this morning, that apparently, there's litigation expenses that were not disclosed to us when we voted on this. So, and I gave another example prior to this meeting, that, um.
Commissioner Byer, just in case you can't see me, there's twenty-two seconds left.
We had an elected official come before us and didn't give us full disclosure about wanting to use outside counsel, so. I don't feel like the, the contract's even valid, because we weren't given full disclosure about the funds.
Thank you. Any further comment on the public hearing? Is there anyone else online who wishes to be heard? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, is there any further council discussion?
I'm just asking a question. Did you say this is grant money, and its only use is, because our grant money, that the grant money says it's only, it can only be used for public use, but not litigation? I just, I just have a clarifying question about that. I thought you, Ms. Stewart, is your name Jody Stewart?
Yes.
Sorry.
You'll have to come back up.
Yeah, come back, I, I'm not trying to extend the time, I just, I know grant money can get very tricky if you don't use it a certain way. I just, I just know you made that statement, I'm just asking just a question. And I don't want anybody else to be helpful.
Where's our Board of Health people?
That, that's, that's what I really wanted to ask.
Because when I just sat here and listened to what she said, this money is sitting in a fund that I'm assuming was grant money, and was a public fund. And now they wanna take this money from a public fund and move it to a fund to support an attorney. So, I'm just, that's what I understood the lady used to say that was up here, that this money is sitting in some type of a fund, I don't know, I'm not familiar with funds.
She's back, okay, I just wanted to.
So.
She's gonna clarify, I just, when I heard that, I just wanted to make sure, Abby, is that, can you?
What was the question I asked?
Our auditor come, are you able to clarify that?
Yes, it is, it is not being moved out of the current fund. Eleven sixty-one is the grant fund that the money was awarded to the Boone County Health Department the last two years.
Okay.
By the state, by the state, that money. We are only moving that money that is in the cash balance, in the pocketbook, into a line, so they can spend it on legal fees.
It's not a true addition.
It's not being moved out into another fund.
So it's a state fund, state money, state money.
Oh, I, yeah.
I'm sorry, are you asking a question?
Yeah, I just said, that was it.
I just kinda wanna know.
Yeah.
But you're asking a question at this point, and we don't have that.
Okay.
Okay, okay, I was, I, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. It's staying in the same fund that the money is in currently.
Is there any further council discussion? Alright, is there a motion?
Show move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposing, sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll open it up for public comment. If anyone wishes to be heard on any matter that was not on our agenda today, please approach the front desk. You'll have, identify yourself and your address, you'll have two minutes to speak. I will wave this orange folder when you have thirty seconds remaining. I will ask everyone in the room who wishes to speak, speak first, and then I will turn it to online.
Alright.
One, just one second, sorry, let me get the clock. Thank you.
Alright, my name is Jody Stewart, and I would like to address your attorney.
I'm sorry, ma'am, can you, we have to record this, so.
I would like for you to swear under penalty and perjury, that what you have just told the council earlier today, that they do not have to respond to notices that the public gives them, is the truth. Do you agree to swear under penalty and perjury, that how you have instructed the council today, is the truth?
Ms. Stewart, council comment, or public comment is for purposes of asking the council questions, I believe? Or making a comment to the council?
Then I will ask my counsel.
And just so you know, none of us are required to respond.
I noticed that he did not respond, so I know where he stands. Council members, it is my belief that you are seated on this council, and that you do represent the people. We elect you, we put you in these seats. You have been served a notice, point of clarity. I would like an answer from each of you. Do you believe the people have all the power? Mr. Van Horn?
And just for the right of the council, this is public comment, it is not a question-answer period. You are not obligated to respond.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to answer my question? Point of clarity, you've received notices, your attorney has told you not to respond, he's also not swearing under penalty and perjury, that what he is instructing you on is the truth. So, would anybody like to answer my question that I've asked you? Do you believe the people have all power to instruct their seated government?
I believe the people have the opportunity, the responsibility to go out there and vote, and elect the people that they want to be put into that place to make those decisions.
The two minutes is up, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to be?
We're not gonna let anybody else respond?
The two mi, I mean, the two minutes is. Is there anybody else that has a public comment?
Would anyone else on the council like to respond at this right now?
We're moving on, is there anybody else who would like to be heard, public comment? Alright, is there any council comment? Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposing, sign? Alright, we will take a fifteen-minute break. Is that enough time, Debbie? And then we will start our first day of our budget workshops.